Want to open our, open our meeting, open the select board meeting at, what is it, six thirty-two?
Sure. Yeah, you can do that. And then either you or Natasha or anyone really can read the remote meeting script.
Do you want to read the script, Natasha? Would you like me to read the script that we use?
Um, I have the one that we open. I think they're probably pretty, pretty similar. Um, if you want, I can go ahead and read it. Um, so as a chair of the school committee, I'll just need to confirm that all members, persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Uh, school committee members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Elizabeth Albota.
Yes, yes.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Uh, Hillary Griffiths is absent, um, Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Okay. And Natasha Vera, Chris, I don't know if you want to go ahead and?
Yep, I will, I will do the, um, select board. Um, David Gavin?
Yes.
Yes, Jeff Swarburg?
Yes.
Justine St. John?
Yes.
Michael Stevens? Mike, can you hear us? All right. And, um, from the town side, um, Greg Johnson?
Here.
Okay. And then from the school side, we have, um,
Yeah, we are.
Uh, from the school side for staff, we have, um, Brian Haas.
Yep, here.
Um, Wayne White?
Yes.
And then, um, we do have our presenters this evening, um, Chris Huntress. And I don't know, please. Make sure you can hear. Hi, Chris. Um, thank you. And then Matthew, um, Sturts, can you hear okay?
I can, nothing clear. Good evening, everyone.
Okay, um. Chris De Silva, did you want me to go ahead and just read the other verbiage, the standard?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, um, this open meeting of the Maynard School Committee and Select Board is being conducted um, as a remote meeting as allowed by Chapter Two of the Act of twenty twenty-three, signed into law by Governor Healy on March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. This act continues to exempt certain provisions under the open meeting law regarding open meetings and public access until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. This meeting is, is convened via Zoom, um, as posted on the website. While an option for a remote attendance or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast, um, to attendees unless otherwise required by law. Please note that this meeting is being recorded accordingly. Be aware that others, folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be, uh, recorded and audible to and visible by the public. Um, if you're planning to record this meeting, well, we are recording, so fine. Um, this meeting will not have, uh, a public comments agenda item. It is a special meeting between the select board and the school committee. Um, so just to recognize, if anyone has submitted public comments for the school committee, we will read those or enter those into the record for our next regular meeting. Um, and then I, I think all the other stuff, we'll just go ahead and, um, call the meeting to order via roll call vote. Um, at six thirty-six. Um, oh, we did that already. So there we go. We're good.
Okay. Great.
So I could, I could just to kind of help kick this off unless, unless Natasha or Chris, you, you would think otherwise. We are joined by our, um, our contracted project manager, which is Colliers International, represented this evening by Matt Sturts. And then we have Hey Matt. And then, uh, we also have our designer, our contractor designer, and that's Chris Huntress of there. Now, I, in my, uh, Brady, Brady bunch, we'll have to find everybody. So, um, I can see Chris up there. So, um, I, I'm, how I kind of see it is, these two have really been hoarding our hand through this a lot. So, and, and they're the experts and they, they've done this before. So, um, I think it's, unless the chairs would mind or think otherwise, I think an overview of where we are, how we've gotten here, and that maybe a path going forward might be, might be best.
Works for me.
Yep.
Okay, Matt, I'm gonna look to you first.
Sure. I think, um, Chris, if you could pull up the, uh, the presentation this evening.
And I'm gonna share.
Happy to. Somebody's gotta make me a co-host.
Or you want me, you want a co-host or?
Well, however, however, the best.
Try it now. Try sharing, try sharing your screen.
Yep, we got it.
Right, we have that, uh, up here. Um, excellent. Thanks, Chris. Uh, so we'll, we'll start with, uh, just a, a quick, uh, introduction. Uh, we'll introduce ourselves, uh, Matt Sturts, project manager with Colliers, we're the, uh, the owners' project manager working on this, uh, the Alumni Field Project on behalf of the, uh, the town of Maynard and Maynard Public Schools. Chris?
Um, Chris Huntress with the Huntress Associates and Huntress Sports, uh, we're landscape architects, engineers and planners out of Andover, Mass. And we've been working with the committee now for, uh, a little over two months, I'd say, or about two months. And you're about to see a, a good deal of our work, so I'll, I'll save that. But, um, we focus, um, solely on athletic and recreation projects. Um, so this is a, a project that we're rather well-versed in and, uh, very comfortable with.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Um, excellent. Thank you. Uh, so, uh, as, uh, as Chris and as Greg alluded to, uh, we'll start with a, a high level schedule overview. Uh, and then I'll turn it to Chris to, uh, present, uh, some of the, uh, design presentation. Uh, those of you on the school committee will, uh, have seen some of this material previously. Uh, but we'll, uh, we'll get into the evolution of the, uh, of the design, uh, and some of the decision-making as the project has evolved to this point. Uh, so looking a little bit, uh, backwards at some of the things that have been completed already, uh, we'll start our timeline with the, uh, the design which kicked off, uh, at the end of November of, uh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we started that conversation, uh, to understand how the local authorities, having jurisdiction, uh, in planning, uh, and the building commissioner, uh, and other permitting, uh, folks would view the project so we could ensure that we started off uh, in the right direction, uh, as far as understanding how the project would be viewed, uh, and you know, as we began, uh, down the path of beginning to develop a design, which is what that second bullet item is, pre-permitting discussion with local authorities, uh, which was a really good and really informative step, uh, to make sure that we, uh, began the process, um, with a, a good understanding of, um, you know, what some of the, uh, the local, um, uh, authorities having jurisdiction thought about the, uh, what we were looking to accomplish. We've been meeting on a bi-weekly basis, uh, with the, uh, the task force, um, which includes, um, a variety of, of stakeholders in the project, but it is, uh, the school committee, uh, Maynard Public Schools, uh, folks from the town, uh, Justin DiMarco from, uh, from DPW and, uh, who, as many of you know, wears many hats in the town. Uh, but, uh, we've meeting on a bi-weekly basis, um, most recently on, uh, on the, uh, seventeenth of January, which isn't quite captured there. Uh, we also, as part of that process, um, gathered input from, uh, student representatives, um, within, um, the, uh, the high school, uh, and whose, uh, participation was really helpful to, to make sure that we had a thorough understanding of, of, of their perspective on the project. Uh, so that's some of the, the work leading up to now. Um, as far as looking ahead, uh, we are engaged in the design development portion of, uh, beginning the design and you'll see some of that work, uh, as Chris takes the reins here in just a second. Uh, but, uh, we, um, one of the key pieces of this is, um, you know, developing the design to a point where, um, the planning board can take a look at, at that and begin to, uh, understand, uh, you know, as we have developed the design, some of what our work is, you know, following on the, the pre-permitting discussions that we've had with them, uh, and making sure that, uh, that we sort of are, are moving in the right direction as far as that goes. Uh, we're working towards a, um, there are sort of two parallel processes, uh, ahead of us, uh, as far as, um, a, uh, both, uh, uh, presenting a project ultimately at the Springtown Meeting, but also requiring a local ballot vote. Uh, we anticipate that. So the steps ahead include, and we're working with the school committee on this, uh, school committee approval of a town meeting article. We're anticipating of later in February for that. Uh, and shortly following that, presenting an approved article to this select board, uh, for review and approval. Um, we're also anticipating, uh, that by about mid-March, that, uh, we would have a design that was, uh, approved by the, uh, the planning board and other local authorities having jurisdiction. Uh, and we're working towards, uh, in finalizing that design and incorporating any changes that come from that process, we would hope to have a finalized uh, cost estimate by April third, early April of twenty twenty-four. Uh, and, uh, ultimately, uh, we'll be working with the, uh, the school committee, uh, keeping, uh, folks in the loop as we, uh, as we go and as the design develops, but we anticipate that a final presentation of that would be, uh, in, uh, April of twenty twenty-four. Um, the ballot vote, as I mentioned, would slot in, and I think we're anticipating May seventh. Uh, Springtown Meeting, as we know, is scheduled for May twentieth. That's a very high-level look at things. Um, I guess we can see if there are any questions folks may have about schedule, uh, before I turn it over to Chris here.
Mr. Juan, what's the, the, why are we having this meeting now, tonight, off schedule, just out of curiosity? That's probably more of a question for, uh, Chris and Natasha, the chairs.
Hmm.
I think it was suggested that it would not fall on either our, of our meetings. It would be a separate meeting. Um, I would, I, I know Greg, you had some input on that, but that's what I recall.
Oh, yeah, we, the last time we were together and you guys were in our meeting, we had a lot of questions about this. And I believe we requested this meeting.
Okay.
We requested that, we requested a, a, um, information session with the two parts.
Got it. I wasn't sure that I didn't understand that we had aligned on a date or anything for that. All right. Thank you. Please continue.
Sure. If, if there are no further questions on schedule, I'll give folks just a, a second to ask them, but, uh, if there are no further questions, um, Chris, take us away.
Sure. Thank you. Everybody hear me all right? Just give me a thumbs up, somebody. Good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so I'm gonna take you through a little bit of the project, um, a little bit of the existing conditions and where we are to date. I will tell you as we get started, uh, our first milestone deadline, um, was actually yesterday, uh, for submission to the planning board. And we submitted on Friday. We heard back from the planning board today, so we're, we're, uh, we're in good shape in that end, but I'll, I'll share with you the plans and and details of where we are. So the existing conditions, I'll go through this very briefly. I can always go back to things. You guys know this site, um, as well, if not better than I do. But we know it pretty well now too. So, um, Alumni Field, uh, right on, along Great Road, um, we're looking at the existing grandstands. Um, and the existing bleachers, press box and a bathroom concession building. Um, your existing bleachers, um, have served you well, and I think are, uh, are ready to, to pass on. So, um, these will come down as part of this application and, um, and we'll have new ones that will be built. The, um, existing sport lights stay, the existing track and field stays. We have looked at, um, other aspects of the future projects that, you know, if you were ever to renovate your track and field, we're making sure that the facilities around, uh, uh, those improvements wouldn't be impacted, the new facilities. This is your existing, uh, concession building, uh, concessions and storage. That will stay. Uh, it was originally slated to be removed, but it offers a good opportunity for storage and athletic facilities always need storage. Um, so the utilities will likely be cut from this, but the, um, uh, the building will become storage. It's got a good garage door here now, and there's, uh, structurally, it's in pretty good shape. I think this shed on the backside may wind up coming down as part of the project. That's not in, uh, good shape, but the rest of the building is pretty good. Existing basketball courts, um, you'll understand why in a few minutes as we get into design, uh, that this picture is important. Um, but these courts, um, uh, serve as the location for, uh, pedestrians as they arrive from Great Road and, and make their way around the, the north end of the track. Um, to be able, or I'm sorry, the northwest end of the track, be able to, to get into the site and over to the concession area. Um, and we'll talk about that a little bit further. So some of the work that we've completed, this is a topographic and boundary survey of the property. This was completed in December and, um, and is now the, what we use as the basis of design. The, uh, the other thing we did was geotechnical investigation where we went out and checked the, the makeup of your subsoil and your subsurface conditions, um, to make sure that we had information that was needed for stormwater and drainage, but also for foundations and structural improvements to the grandstands, the press box and the, and the building as well. So this is, um, the first of, uh, this sheet L-one of the plan set that was submitted on Friday. This is your layout, materials and landscape plan. Um, and it shows the bigger elements being, it's really, uh, as I consider about three pieces. You've got the bleacher and press box here on the south side of the field. You've got the new location for the, um, bathroom concession building here on the end of the basketball courts. The existing fieldhouse here where my cursor is will stay. And the existing stone building over here will stay as well. This is Great Road, uh, out along here, which is your, your frontage and the high school would be um, down and, and to the left, um, or to the west, um, kind of southwest of this location. Kind of zooming in on that, on, on that, uh, piece, we've got access improvements as we come in off of Great Road. This area that you see in the hatch will have new asphalt pavements and that's, uh, to satisfy the requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board. So this will now be an accessible entrance. Right now, it's, it's, I think there's some old pavement in there, but it's pretty rutted and, um, and full of potholes as you come in. So this will be brought to grade and and made accessible as it comes in. We're gonna tie in your ticket booth and tie it into the existing walkway that wraps around the west end of the track. And then pick up when we get down here by the existing, uh, fieldhouse with a new concession bu- building. Let's see if I can zoom in on that there. Um, so the walkway will pick up here as it becomes new, come down and in towards the existing fieldhouse. And we'll be building a new walkway as it transitions over to the new bleacher and press box. Um, and those are your main portion to your elements. I'm gonna go into a little bit more detail there on some of these. So this is a seating layout for the proposed bleacher and press boxes. Shows, um, nine hundred and fifty seats, and then there's capacity within the press box and standing room that brings it up to, um, approximately a thousand seats plus or minus, but it's nine hundred and fifty, uh, that are seated. This is your foundation detail, uh, that would be required, and you will see right here, well, the, the body of the, the, the grandstand sits over a slab. The press box has a, a slab as well, but it's got a little more of a foundation to it because it's a little taller structure. And then this element right where my cursor is here is a handicap lift that will bring, um, uh, wheelchair-enabled individuals up to the press box level, um, to make the, the press box and the entire grandstand fully compliant. These are some of the options. These are, this is not your bleacher. This is not, uh, it's similar, but it's not exactly your bleacher, but um, there's some of the options that we're presently reviewing with the committee. Uh, you have options with how we use color in riser boards that you see here in the red. You can see it here in a deeper red on, on this version too. And then you'll have options for seating, uh, whether you go with just a straight, um, a straight plank seating here, or whether you incorporate some molded seats, uh, with, that are backless, or you could go all the way to arms and, and chairs. Um, we're not proposing anything with the, with the chairs and arms at this point. Uh, we're either into a bench seating or probably, or I think at most into this kind of a molded seating. But these are the colors and ranges of, of, um, selections that we're gonna be going through with the committee as we advance. The press box, um, this is a press box that we did last year for the town of Seacon. This press box is a, um, is a, um, about a twenty-eight foot press box here with a, with filming on the roof. Uh, this happens to be one room on the interior. You'll have multiple rooms. Um, but you have access through a hatch panel up and onto the roof for filming. We'll bring utilities up onto the roof. Um, so that they'll be fully, uh, capable for your media and TV and IT folks who want to be able to tape and broadcast from this facility. They can certainly do that. There are options as we get into press boxes on their size and range, and the committee asked me to point out some that we had done locally that, that might be good examples. Uh, the one that you see on the right here is an eight-foot by twenty-four-foot. Uh, it says two rooms. It was actually a single-room press box. Um, over here, we did that at Asabett Valley Regional Technical High School uh, last year filming on the roof, and that's got an accessible lift to it. The one on the, on the left here is in Swampscott at Bloxidge Field. And that's a eight-foot by forty-two-foot, uh, three-room press box with a media room in the center and then coaching rooms on either end, and then accessibility to the, um, uh, to the roof again for, for filming capabilities. We do show platforms left and right, and yours would, uh, be similar to that, although a little bit smaller. And there would be opportunities for filming, uh, from these locations as well. I'm gonna take you through a little bit of the building. I probably should have started with the reverse picture, but this is a layout of the building, uh, the new concession bathroom storage building. It's gonna look like a lot of fixtures and, and it is, and that's driven by the plumbing code. The plumbing code is based on the number of seats that you have in the structure, and we can go into more detail on that later. But right now, the size bleacher that we're posing, that nine hundred and fifty seats, um, or a thousand-seat overall capacity generates a bathroom capacity of six fixtures for women that you see in the, in the upper room here. This is the women's room on the upper side, the, the lower side, the men's room. It generates the need for four fixtures, two of which can be urinals, and then seven, um, lavatories or sinks. This is a code issue. This is not something that, that we can, uh, manipulate easily. Um, and we have reviewed this with your building inspector and your plumbing inspector to make sure that we were interpreting the code correctly, and they have agreed, uh, that we are. That's the layout. We've got a small storage area, um, in this location, and this wall will become your electric uh, utility area along here. And then you've got, uh, ten-foot by twenty-five-foot plus or minus concession area. Um, these are the elevations of the building. It'll have an asphalt shingled roof and, uh, board and baton siding. This is an artist rendering of, of what it would look like. Um, I will tell you, as we've shared this with a number of, um, with the committee and a few others, the concession window will be growing. Uh, this will get bigger so that we can better service the folks that come up. Um, but otherwise, this is a good example of the, of the fit and finish and character of the building, um, that you're going to see. Local permits that are required, um, for the building, grandstand and press box, we've submitted to the planning board for site plan review. And also a special permit for parking relief. Um, I did hear today from the planning director that based on the, on the, uh, details of our application, the special permit for parking relief may not be necessary. So we'll have more conversations about that this week, but should we need it, it's been submitted for. And, uh, we can decide with the committee whether to continue on that or to, um, or to withdraw that application if it's not necessary. Second would be stormwater regulations, and this is, uh, site plan review with the planning board automatically through your stormwater regs, triggers a review with the Conservation Commission on just stormwater. Stormwater regulations, your stormwater regulations and DEP's stormwater regulations are really not made for a project of this size. This project has no parking lots, no significant increase in impervious area. So it's a little bit difficult to comply with the, uh, stormwater. We've had a conversation with your conservation agent, uh, Julia Flannery, who's been very helpful. And we are requesting a waiver. Uh, we made that submission last Friday as well. We'll be on the February twenty-seventh meeting of the Conservation Commission, which is at six, and then planning board at seven. But I'm sure between now and then, we'll have continued conversations on that waiver request. Uh, and third would be, uh, sewer and water utility permit that will be needed for the building connections. That permit as well was submitted, uh, on Friday to, um, Justin DiMarco and his staff. And that is, uh, that review is underway presently. Justin was involved in the layout and selection of how the utilities would run, uh, because he's part of the committee. So we, he was very helpful in giving us some upfront information and, and, uh, impressions on what he'd like to see. Um, so I expect that that utility review will go rather smoothly. The next steps, um, first will include, um, continuing with the building design. We'll review finish options. Uh, with the client, we'll fin- finalize the building footprint, elevations, foundation details, and any of the interior details, material selections, and the like that need to be made. Same will happen with the, uh, grandstand and press box. We still have some options to go over on the size of the press box, the layout, the interior fit and finish, and, uh, finalizing elevations and foundation details, although much of that is done, um, is already completed now for site plan. Site planning, utility design, um, really the only thing left, uh, is water and sewer, the permit that we had talked about, and understanding in a better way, uh, IT, media, data and electrical needs. Uh, we had some exchange today. Thank you, Brian, with your staff at the high school in that regard, and we'll continue those conversations about, you know, kind of tel data needs at the press box. Planning board schedule, it's our anticipation. We filed, we did meet the January twenty-four submission deadline. I expect a February twenty-seventh opening of the public hearing. There's a March twelfth second hearing. Um, and then I would, I would hope that we could close, but you know, we may have issues that we have to finalize with them, but uh, they've been very helpful to date to get this along, and I think it's a reasonably straightforward application, so we should be in reasonably good shape. And with that, um, happy to take any questions. I can go back to any of the images that we have or, um, or, or, you know, stop my share screen if folks want to talk, talk in a different way.
Chris, I, I'm gonna defer to the select board because I know that the school committee has seen a lot of this, so, um, this is really for you all mostly.
Okay. I guess the only question I have is, um, when you were starting this project, was there a budget that you had in mind going into the process? And have you been trying to keep it to a certain amount?
I would defer to, um, Matt Sturts with Colliers for that because a budget was, um, before we were involved.
Sure, I, I can, um, speak to the, uh, the effort to, um, be conscious of the budget. I think, um, as Greg may have, uh, have circulated, the, um, we, um, we were targeting a, a number, uh, I think there was an, an initial thought that it was going to be somewhere in the range of uh, two and a half million dollars to construct. Uh, and we have done our best to sort of keep our eye on that figure. Uh, we do have, uh, some, uh, some data on budget, and this is an order of magnitude budget, uh, that can be shared here i- if folks do want to get into, uh, some detail on that. Uh, we're tracking slightly above that at this point. Um, and we can get into as, as much detail as folks want to on that. Um, certainly, we have our eye on trying to be as close to that initial, uh, two and a half million dollar target as possible.
And so there's, there's still an effort to value, value engineer the project. Um, I noticed a few things in the budget that I was just, and it's probably because I don't understand it, um, but it's like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for electrical improvements, um, between a hundred and twenty-five thousand for improvements, and then, um, one twenty-five for electrical contingencies, but I guess I just don't understand how that factors into bleachers or?
Well, I'm gonna take that one, Matt?
Uh, yes, if you could, that'd be helpful.
That's a great question. So the electrical engineer is part of our team on the design side. And, uh, your athletic director, Mike Aria, was good enough to show him around, uh, out on site. The electrical service that comes into your site right now, into this site, um, not the high school, but into here, off, comes off of Great Road. I'll see if I can go to the next slide. Might be easier here. Comes from a pole across Great Road here and comes overhead on the two utility poles, one here and one here. But it's a, it's a single-phase service, two hundred amp service. It's very similar to a residential service that you would have um, for your house, and the needs here are significantly greater. Presently, you trip, um, your existing service isn't sufficient to, to even power what you have on site. Mike Aria, uh, had let us know that several times they had tripped the breaker on the pole, and the utility company had to come out to replace those, and obviously there's a charge to the community for that as well, but, but, um, the electrical needs for this new project will include for the concession and bathroom building, there's a two hundred amp service, there's a hundred amp service in the new press box. And then you've got all the existing site features to maintain, such as the electric to the sports lights, the electric to the stone house, the field house, and the other. And the other on site, you know, lighting of the tennis or the basketball courts and the like. So the. The two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you saw was a placeholder that we put in. As we were discovering that we need a new electric service, so that's gonna involve. We're gonna have to involve national grid or whoever your service provider is out here. And put a new pole and drop a new service, uh, three phase service into the site and there will be a cost for that. What that is, we don't know right now, so we've put these placeholders in and we hope that that number comes down.
Okay, so and I, I just. Looking at the bigger picture, so that would mean that our. Uh, cost for electric in that location would go up considerably as well if we're having that much more of a draw on it.
I wouldn't say it's considerably. It's, it's not that, that we're gonna be drawing anything significantly and actually when you replace your sports lights, that your cost for power. Could actually go down significantly. Because the new L E D lights are forty percent more efficient than the existing lights, but. Um. It's just that if we have everything on, on this site at one time, when you have a game. Say it was a night game and you had people in the press box and the concession, you know, at full steam. The two hundred amp service that you have in there wouldn't be sufficient right now and that's why you're having trouble, so. Um, but I don't think, I wouldn't consider it. Significant in the increase from an electric usage standpoint. But from a code perspective. You're not complying and we need to upgrade it.
Uh, if I may, I, I wanna back up to Justine's initial question on the initial budget and. Matthew, I appreciate the comments that you made that uh, the focus was. When you stepped in was about two and a half million dollars, which is surprising to me because I think when. Uh, the select board was initially uh, you know, presented with this need. The number was about a million, then it crept up to about a million and a half. And then it became two million. And people at each step, I might add, were extremely concerned about this uh, escalation in price. And then it was just about a week ago, two weeks ago, that the board was hit with three million dollars. Um, or whatever the number is as we sit here this evening. So I'm concerned about the escalating price since the outset of the project, not only Matt, since your involvement, but even since. The select board and the community actually had a full blown discussion on this, um, you know, about a year ago. Um, the second question I have is you mentioned um, during the discussion. Uh, nine hundred and fifty seating capacity. Now, there's been discussion among, outside in the community since uh, some of this stuff has started to leak out. Um, and I have heard from very concerned residents that. Some research has been done on other schools. That have lower, now, now I would ask the school committee, what's our total population, students at the high school?
I can respond to that if you want. It's just under four hundred at the high school, David.
Four, four hundred at the high school. And um, I have, I've heard from members of various committees in town that have done some research on this issue. That schools with much higher. Capa- of student population than ours have facilities which with less seating capacity than what is proposed here. So I don't understand, I recognize that there's visitors add on whatever, that was part of the discussion at the last meeting that we had. Um. I don't understand why the size of this. Seating capacity seems to be larger than what other communities. Perhaps even larger communities need beyond us and uh, Natasha, if you wanna respond to that, feel free.
Yeah, I'll start and then I'll, I'll pivot over to, to Matt and, and Chris um, Huntress for additional, so. When this was originally kicked off through the task force before the design team was brought on. Um, it looked to at the capacity of what the current alumni bleachers are, which are over a thousand. We as a board, collective board, agree that, and that was at time when you also had the visitor bleachers. We tore those down, so those are not gonna be part of this project. And so the idea is that those visitor bleachers or the visitors would also now need to be absorbed into the um. The main bleachers. Now, since that conversation, because we've all heard um, questions, is that. Is that too much perhaps, even if, you know, we're getting rid of the visitor and maintaining the size? Because it hasn't grown in size from what is there now. Um. Is there still opportunity? And at the last design meeting, we did talk about um, looking at. Um, Assabit was one of those examples, um, because there is certain implications where. Um, if you go down a certain amount, it would lessen um, in some way the need for bathroom, like the codes. I don't know, we haven't gotten confirmation of, of what that would look like and I know Chris, we had just asked him last week about that um.
I have that available Natasha.
Okay, yeah, oh great, so I, I didn't wanna put you on the spot, but I know that was one of the asks that we could put out to the public. Thank you on, on what that comparison might be and I think Assabit was the one we thought would be helpful to do. Um, Chris, whatever you can share.
Sure. Um. Let me take you back. I'm gonna go down to a few slides that I haven't shown yet. So this is a. This is a, a, an Excel spreadsheet, if you will, a calculator that we, that we created to help. Folks understand. The total capacity and how that drives the size of the bathrooms, um, because that's really. When we talk about the biggest impact to your budget. It's been the, the fixture count in the bathrooms is what, and the size of the bathroom building that drives it. So this is a quick spreadsheet. I won't bore you with too much detail, but if you look up here, total capacity of a thousand. You divide that evenly between um, men and women, so each side gets five hundred. For the first three hundred for women. It's one fixture per sixty seats and then over three hundred, it's one fixture per a hundred and fifty. For men. If, it's one fixture. For a hundred and twenty seats up to the first three hundred and sixty and then one per one fifty over three sixty. So just to walk you through some of this quickly, this would be. A thou- again, a thousand seats, this what's been the design capacity. And I'll ask you to just keep an eye on, on these numbers over here. So what's required in green are seven toilets for the women, seven lavatories. And for the men. Four toilets and seven lavatories. Um, so when I drop this. And, and as a way of comparison, we did Assabit Valley. That bleacher is about seven hundred and seventy five, uh, seven hundred sixty or seven hundred and seventy five. Seats in that, in that capacity over there. When you drop to nine hundred is the first time you see a drop in the number. Over here, we just went from seven to six. And from. Four to seven, so the number didn't change for the men. Uh, in the toilet count uh, to go to nine hundred, but it did in the women. And when you go to, the next time you'll see a change is down to six hundred. And at that point, you would drop to five fixtures for the, for the women and three for the, for the men. So I would offer that although there's some savings there, um. You know, once you're over a capacity of three hundred or um, I'm sorry, three hundred per man and three hundred per woman, total of six hundred. Um, the fixture count goes up very slowly, but before you get to that three hundred count, it actually goes up pretty quick, um, because of the way the. This is all based on the plumbing code. So let me um, just take you over to the. To the building real quick. So, you know, reduction to six hundred, which would be a forty percent reduction in your, in your bleacher. Would only net you the reduction of two toilets. Uh, in the women's room and I believe it was one uh, in the men's room. Um, so you, you'd be able to shorten your building by about that much and I think you lost um, a lavatory as well or a sink. So you'd be able to shorten a little, but it's not, you know, if I take it down forty percent, I guess is my point. If I take the bleacher down by forty percent capacity. I don't remove forty percent of the building. It's, it's not that even of an exchange. I know that's a long-winded answer, so I'll stop there and see if, uh, see if I've answered your question.
Well. Uh, I think there's also the question about how the project evolved into including. Bathrooms and concession stand and whatever when it started out of bleacher repair, but that's a different discussion.
Really not a, it's not a different discussion because you can't build a bleacher. Uh, with today's code, you can't build a new bleacher. Without addressing the, the bathroom fixture issue. So you, you can no longer use porta potties, which is a change in the code. You can no longer use porta potties to satisfy the building requirements. That's a change in the plumbing code that's come in in the last number of years. And actually tightened up just on December eighth of this year of twenty twenty three as well.
Would the same be true for re- for repair of existing facilities, uh, of existing bleachers versus replacement?
Um. That would be a question for your building inspector. I don't know that, but I, but I can tell you your structural foundations for your existing. Bleacher do not meet code, so I would be very surprised. If the building inspector allowed that to, to be a repair. But that's really, it's not my question, that's to answer, that's your building inspector that would have to answer that.
It would have been, yeah.
I just wanted to add, I remember about, just going back to the inspection report that we had from. Twenty twenty two, maybe it was, that he gave. Um. He. Wouldn't certify it and I think the question came back as far as how much work would need to be done. Um, but the recommendation is that there was a lot extensive work that needed to be done in order for him to even certify it and the expectation. From the building inspector was that. He extended the certification as much as he could, I'm paraphrasing, under the assumption that town would be getting new bleachers. There was a statement that alluded to. That expectation in his report. That. That's why we couldn't certify anymore.
I do have one question about the um, value engineer part, um, real quick. As far as, you know, I, I know that uh, Chris, you mentioned that if you. Um, you know, if you reduced, so if, and I guess, and I actually don't know the population of Assabit, but I feel like it's, it's larger than the high school, the Maynard High School, but. I might be wrong. Um, but if you reduced. The bleacher seating capacity to say seven fifty, um. Yes, you would only lose one or two lavatories or bathrooms, but. Wouldn't you save on the overall cost of the bleachers because you're now not constructing bleachers for nine hundred?
So I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to insinuate that you wouldn't. It would be cheaper. It's just not going down, you know, if I take twenty five percent off the bleacher. I don't take twenty five percent off the building, I guess was my point. You're still gonna build a building very similar. At seven hundred and fifty seats to what you see there. But you're right, the bleacher would be cheaper.
Can we get cost estimates for seven fifty, five hundred seats?
Matt, I'll, I'll defer to you on that. We're, you know, we can certainly work with the committee if they, they have numbers that they wanna, that they want us to look at.
Hmm, we, uh, we, we serve at the uh, the direction of the uh, the bleacher task force if, if we would like to uh, to explore that. I think that. We, we can look at a reduced option and try to understand how that begins to impact the um. The numbers both with the bleachers themselves and the code requirements that are being driven by the capacity of those bleachers. Uh, I do wanna just acknowledge quickly that I know that the uh, the nine hundred and fifty um, capacity on the bleachers. Was the product of a considerable amount of, of work by uh, by Mike Aria, the athletic director. Uh, in um, arriving at that figure, uh, and some of that work in fact predates uh, Collier's involvement in the project. But I do know that, that that number is, it didn't, um, it wa- it was driven by what were identified as, as some needs. Uh, so I, I certainly, um, you know. Would like him to be part of the, uh, some of the discussions if we're talking about changing the design capacity of the project.
And that's fair. I, my, I, I guess one of the observations I would make about, you know, uh, the, the bleachers themselves is. Uh, I haven't been in the last year and a half or so to as many athletic events at the, at the football field. But. Other than graduation. The, those bleachers are not to capacity. I don't remember any. Event other, there was a town meeting many, many years ago that uh, they utilized the bleachers. Um. But I don't think I've ever seen, other than graduation, admittedly, graduation does fill up the bleachers. On the, on the uh, the home side of the field, if you wanna say that. We don't use the other side. Uh, for, for the graduation crowd. But I don't think I've ever seen a sporting event. At Maynard High School that had capacity uh, on. Both sides, which this would presumably present. Uh, let alone on one side, but. Again, I, I could be, I could be wrong on that, but that's just my observation.
We've never had without visitor bleachers. I think that's the question that we don't. We don't have, right? So when both, when the main bleachers were open. So were the visitor bleachers, so we don't have, this is a, the X factor. We don't have a variable or a history of. What would be a full capacity or like a full season with the regular bleachers open without having visitor bleachers available, so. That's the part I've personally, you know, struggled with. How do you count for the ones when we had a full or. Like a football game, that's the one that comes to mind. When we last had the bleachers open, we also had visitors there.
Yeah, but I've been to, I've been to so many games over the years.
Yeah.
That I don't think there's been one game. That the visiting side was capacity. Um, and I don't believe that there's been one. Game with a home side was capacity. So what it appears is that we're reaching capacity for one event a year. Which for a million dollars or two million dollars or whatever seems to be kind of outrageous. Um. And the one event a year is if it doesn't rain. Because we can hold that inside under those circumstances. Um, that's, you know, I, I think, I think we're over-exaggerating. The amount of people that are in attendance at a Maynard High School sporting event. And football generally uh, produces the largest uh, capacity crowd. Soccer has oh, uh, people that show up. But the majority of those people sit on the home side regardless, rarely do you see people on both sides. And if there are, it's a smattering on the visiting side and on the home side, it's never a capacity. So again, I think that this is being driven, in, in essence, it's a project being built for graduation. Um, and to me, it seems kind of. Outrageous, but that's number one. I, I, I wanna move on to another question. Uh, is it the intent, and I don't know who would answer this, because it's, it's post-build. Uh, would these bathrooms be available for public use twenty four, seven, three sixty five? If not, is this also a sixth event? Uh. Are we, are we building a million dollar building? We use at six home football games, twelve soccer events. Who's responsible for opening up the doors? Are they open all the time? If they are, how do we prevent vandalism? What's the cost of running them at all time? Because you always have to have electricity presumably at that point. I think there's a lot of unanswered questions relative to. Uh. Operational issues. And you're looking for a vote on this. From the select board to move forward with the project with concerns like this in three weeks. That's not fair. It's not fair to the community. It's not fair to the board. Uh, my next question would be, is there, what are the energy efficiency aspects of the building? Is there, uh, was there consideration given to solar? Was there consideration given to any type of energy efficiency? How would that impact the operational costs versus the installation cost, the build out costs? Uh, for energy efficiency in those, in those buildings? Thirdly, operationally, um, who's responsible for the maintenance of the building so that it doesn't smell? So that it doesn't, uh, that, so that it's filled with toilet paper, so that it's, uh, we are sure that there's not. Uh, running water at any given time. Is that gonna be the town's responsibility? Or is the school gonna have somebody in there every day making sure that we're not losing money because somebody left the water run?
I think that was three questions, right, David?
Could be.
I, I can speak to the last, I can speak to part of the last two anyway, certainly, um. With regard to the energy efficiency, solar was considered and the roof system is capable of supporting. Solar, should you decide to go that route, um, it's not a, a difficult thing to adapt and we can certainly plan for that as we. As we finalize the design documents, um, to make sure that should you wanna add solar. At a later date, it would be a, a rather simple, uh, rather simple add.
But I would wanna, I would wanna have, sorry, sorry, Chris, I, I just would wanna have the cost estimates on those. So that we're not just adding it in for the purpose of adding it in. I just wanna make sure that's been considered, so when it's discussed. It can be said, yes, it was discussed and here's why it was rejected or not.
The, the um, and certainly that's a good comment, um. We haven't priced out solar, I'm not sure that. If, well, uh, we could, we could certainly cross that bridge. Um, the only adaptation we would need to make, quite frankly, is the ability to run a conduit. Um, the only adaptation we would need to make, quite frankly, is the ability to run a conduit. Out through the soffit and be able to provide access to the roof, uh, for the. Installation of solar, but otherwise the structure underneath the roof is supportive. And is easily, uh, adaptable for solar, so it's not a, it's not a complicated thing for us to. To make, uh, provisions for it in the future, but, uh, and we could talk to the committee about. About getting quotes for solar, uh, in advance if they'd like to do that. The other thing I will offer you, and we had this conversation with your building inspector again, is that, um, Maynard is, um. A community that adopted the stretch code, so we will be, um, building to that requirement, which offers additional. Efficiencies from a energy and sustainability standpoint. And finally, on the, on the water, uh, you know, it's, it's an excellent question, the bathroom facilities now are all automated. So that they don't stay on, they automatically shut off, there's not gonna be a, a turn knob that somebody would be able to just leave a faucet going. And, you know, with regard to toilets, I would hand it over to the, to the school to talk about who might maintain the, um. The building in the long term.
Real quick, can we go back to the, the, um, code, are these buildings heated?
Yes, this would be heated.
And how are they gonna be heated?
Electric.
Okay, and, and when you were talking about solar just then, were you talking about? Which, which are the two buildings, the facilities and the press boxes, were you talking about both of those or?
No, um, no, I wouldn't necessarily do the press box because we're, we're filming on the roof, um. And access to the roof, it would just be the bathroom and concession building.
And then, did you answer David's question about whether they're open or year round or not, or that was the plan?
Uh, whether or not they are open year round, I, I don't know, but they are heated and their ability, they, they have the ability to open them year round. I wouldn't expect that they would have it open during the winter if the facilities aren't being used, they could certainly. Um, shut it down and just run the, the heat minimally to, um. Uh, to, to, you know, to save the building.
And do we have operating cost estimates?
We have not gotten that far yet, no.
When would we expect this to do this?
I would defer to Matt on that.
Hmm, I think we have to determine the final building configuration before we could know that. Uh, so I think there, there are decisions to be made before we are at a, a point where we could present a number that we felt was credible.
I, I think going back, uh, I'm sorry, going back to the last point about the availability of the building. Um, I, I think that's important for residents to know. Uh, when they're discussing this, because I saw a comment today, granted it was on social media regarding, um. Can't wait to be able to have Little League and be able to use a bathroom rather than a, uh, than a porta potty. Well, if it's Little League, they're not gonna have the building open. Unless there's an intent to have somebody with a key or with somebody with access at all times. To be able to open it up whenever there's a crowd there. So people who are looking at this project need to understand that this million dollar, uh. Facility here that we're looking at right now on the screen is probably going to be used a minimum of number of times a year. Open and available to the residents a minimum number of times a year, probably less than twenty would be my estimate. For a million dollars, that's the question.
I think that's a fair question. I think that comes down to, um, operationally and, and administratively, um, what.
Yeah, and I, I agree, and these are questions that, again, um, I saw on the first screen that we saw. That this is being brought back to the select board on February twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth. For a request to move forward to ask our residents for three million dollars in, in tax increases. And, uh, we don't know the answer to that, how often it's gonna be used. And if we don't by a month from now, which I don't know if we will or won't. How, how are residents supposed to know? How is the board supposed to know? How can people even say that this is what we wanna do or that it's, that we should do it? I think it's, it's, uh, go ahead.
David, no, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding your, the question, um, because I, there's two parts. I know we've started talking, I see Brian has his hand up already. But this would be a structure that would be maintained by the school department. That is currently, the MOA has that outline, that there are structures, that's part of that agreement, that we would. Maintain that for the school, um, there are access to the current concession area that is limited. But there are people like the Booster Club will use it for different games, um, softball, baseball, use it to sell things. So there is a control already in place for accessing the smaller. Um, station there that we don't have a bathroom on, on site, but we have porta potties and those are currently accessible. I don't think they're locked, um, but the porta potties available right now are still accessible by everyone on there. So it would just be more of, I think what you're, from my understanding, you're looking for a maintenance plan of some sort. And you would like to understand some more controls.
That's, that's only part of my inquiry, uh, more so, it's, it's the cost of this. What's the return on the investment? When you've got it be, when you've got what appears to be a, a building that's going to be used for football games? Graduation and, uh. If, if it's not gonna be used on a daily basis by the residents, if it's not available for daily use, when somebody's using the track. If they have to use the restroom and that's not available, they paid a million dollars for nothing. If somebody doesn't go to a football game, they paid a million dollars for nothing.
Are you, are you saying, are you, David, are, are you asking? If I decide I wanna walk on the track on a Tuesday afternoon, that am I gonna be able to use the bathroom? Are you talking about like a Little League game or a softball game?
Yeah, I'm asking for all, all opportu- how often is it available for the, for the use of the residents?
Well, how often is it available now to a resident?
Now, there's nothing there, there's, there's a porta potty. It's available twenty-four, seven from what Natasha just said.
If I could, if I could offer, this building wouldn't only serve the major events, but it would serve the practices. Every day that are, that are, uh, the high school sports venues that have practices at Alumni Field. Would have access to this, uh, bathroom facility, which they presently don't have now. Um, so it would get more use than just, you know, the few times a year, it would be open. Uh, you know, I defer to the school as to how often that is, but it would be open throughout the school year, both, um, in the fall and in the spring. Every day for, for athletic use.
I just, I just wanted to ask a question about, um, kind of to piggyback off of David's question about maintenance. Uh, I know Natasha, you said that this is something that the school department would, would absorb. So I just wanna make sure that the school department's able to absorb, um, the cost of, or, or, or the, the work. Um, that would be required to maintain this building, um, without adding additional staff.
I'll defer to Brian on that because we haven't gotten into a granular, um. Dollar from a maintenance plan for that, but I believe that there was some maintenance that's already undertaken for like the fieldhouse. Which exists, so I don't know if it would just be expanding upon that, but Brian, you, you wanted to elaborate.
I mean, just, I, I think I would like you to think about this facility, the bleachers. The bathrooms, the concession stand in a slightly different perspective than just a high school. Project, it's really a school and town project. And I think Chris alluded to that, so that not only is it, yes, football and soccer and field hockey. It's also town soccer, li- little league when they're there. I mean, there's a lot of activities from the school and from the town side that happen at alumni. And when those events are happening, I would expect the bathrooms to be open, not just on a Friday night or on. Whatever night, you know, Wednesday night for a field hockey game, but lots and lots of times. It would be open to, for spectators to be able to use real restrooms. So it's not the six Friday nights, it would get a, I believe, a lot of use in the fall, spring and even in the summer. For Little League and things like that that use that facility, um, and in terms of maintenance, we'll, you know. We will be maintaining that building, will it be open twenty-four, seven? That was never our intent, that hasn't been part of the conversations, but I think it will see a lot of use. And I think it potentially becomes a center point for the athletic facility. And I think people will want to be there and it will, potentially it'll be very nice and it'll be a place for the community to go.
Okay, so we all have to add another F T E in order to, um, maintain that building. I think that's what I'm getting at is, you know. Work, um, you know, to manage, because it is, it's a building now, um, that, that is a lav- it's, you know, several bathrooms. Both sides, open different times, um, you know, and, and the other question I do have is that. Um, speaking to the times when the, and, and this is just because I don't understand the laws, um, and Chris, you might be able to help me with this. So we need to have, um, these bathrooms in order to, because we have the capacity of the nine hundred and fifty bleachers. Um, so when do those have to be open? So if it, if it's, is it only a school event that those have to be open? Or because now we have a capacity of nine hundred and fifty at any time? Do we need, so when we have these other community events that maybe the bathrooms aren't open? Is, is there some other requirement now that, that it is gonna have to be open more often than not? I'm just trying to understand it.
So that's a, it's, that's a really interesting question. I would have to have a conversation with your building inspector, but my, I would offer that. Bathroom is a requirement based on the seating capacity, so I think if you've got, you know, a, a Saturday afternoon and somebody's. Recreationally using the track or even a Tuesday morning, say, um, and there aren't crowds expected or seats, uh, you know, to be taken. Then I wouldn't expect that it had to be opened by code, um, but I would, it's an excellent question. I've, I've never been asked that, so I would have to take into that.
Like, I know Mike has his hand up, but I wanna jump on to that point. Because I think one thing that we were discussing when eating the schools is that, you know, for electric heating, your, your winter months are, are gonna draw a significant amount more. And it's not proportionate for the coolest months, so if you can have those. Facilities closed during the winter months, that could significantly change the sizing of your heating system, for instance. And that should be considered, I would assume, as you're moving through the design phase.
Sure, I can talk to the architects about that. It was not our intention to drain the building. Which is why it seemed more efficient to, to leave some function of heat through there, but, um, let me talk to the architects about it and see what they come back with.
Mike, you have a question still?
Yeah, I do, um, most of my questions that I had have already been asked by my colleagues, uh, about budget and capacity.
We. I can't hear you, Mike.
I think he's, Mike, I think your microphone is having trouble.
Looking now?
No, it's, it's, it's going in and out, Mike.
Oh, oh, let me try again, can you? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Got me now, okay, I'm sorry. Um, so my question has to do with, um, as I say, having, uh, wanted to ask about the budget and capacity. My colleagues have already asked those questions, um, but regarding, uh, access to gender neutral bathrooms. Has that been, uh, discussed? Um, is it part of school policy to provide gender neutral bathrooms? I'm afraid I'm not up to date on that. Um, and if so, um, how would that impact the cost of this project?
Well, I can answer from a building code perspective, there are no requirements for gender neutral. Or a family-related bathroom, as it speaks directly to men's room and women's room. A policy issue, I would turn it over to the superintendent or, or others from the school committee to address.
So I can say we currently don't have gender neutral bathrooms in the schools at this point.
Is there any discussion about that being a policy either soon or in the future?
I'm sure there will be at some point, it's not currently on our agenda right now.
Anything else, Mike?
Can't hear you, Mike.
If you can't hear him, I guess there's nothing else. I have a question about.
He's trying to speak though, Chris, he's trying to speak.
All right, he's, now he's muted, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, my other questions have already been answered, so thank you.
All right, okay, I have a question about lighting, are we, are we replacing the field lighting?
No, you're not.
When we, so when you spoke earlier about, you mentioned lighting, is that the lighting for the, the, um, concession buildings and stuff?
Uh, we're not replacing any, I believe when I spoke about lighting, it was with regard to the upgraded electric service. Uh, we're making sure that as we bring in the new electric service, that should you decide to either replace the lights at Alumni. Or like, you know, add additional lights to baseball or softball or anything else, that the capacity is there, um, but we're not. Um, replacing existing lights now, no.
Right, because then I know in, in response to a question just in, it asked, that was the answer that the, um. The lighting would be more economical, you know, more, more, um, friendly, but anyway. Um, the other question I have is in relation to the current concession building in the stone. Which some people call the stone building in Maine or the fieldhouse, are there any, um, di- di- there's a discussion? About this whole project, um, include any upgrades or repairs to either of those buildings?
Um, we have not addressed the stone building at all, so I would say that, no, that, that clearly is not part of our scope. The existing concession building was originally, um, slated to be torn down. As we discussed it with the committee, it seemed to make sense to, to leave it in place, the, um. I, I could look at, we haven't looked at the cost for what that would require, it, I don't think it requires much, if anything. To do that, but we could, uh, we could look at those costs.
I, I just didn't know if there, if there was anything included for them, because.
The only thing we'd be doing is clearing out the concession section of the building and, and making it available for storage. So it really just be shutting off utilities, which we could do as part of the overall construction project, that wouldn't add cost.
Thank you.
Chris, just to add, um, about the fieldhouse, there is a separate, um. C P C application that is looking from a historical standpoint to, to get some designs for that, um. We looked, we did ask about the potential of maybe cost savings for the restroom. If we could utilize what was already existing at the fieldhouse. And that was not able to be possible because of the code requirement of the bathroom toward the feet or the proximity to the bleachers. Um, it needed to be someplace that was closer, so resulted, it was a three hundred, thank you.
Okay, so that, that being said, if the, if the C P C decides they don't wanna get involved in that project. What happens to that project and does that then become an, an, an additional cost to the town slash school? What do you, or if they, or if they don't jump on board, does that project get abandoned?
I would wanna probably, I know the, the historical commission, um, is working with the C P C, they're leading that effort. Um, with their application, that isn't something, I know Mike Aria has helped. But, um, really, there's some discussion, I, I would say the historic, uh, commission would probably wanna. I don't know their progress of their application and where it was, it has, it, it was up for review, I would just happen to be there at one of their recent meetings and it was discussed, but I don't know. I can't speak with, to fidelity of all the details of where, where that project or request is.
Thank you. Anybody else in the select board have any questions for anybody?
Yeah, so I just wanna return to the, the sizing estimate, I think I, I would like to see from the bleacher committee, um. Estimates at, at lower capacity to understand the cost difference, I think there's a. It's a large opportunity cost for even the funding, even if it's not proportional to the scale of the bleachers. For a huge variety of needs within the town, including within the school department, uh, as, as we're gonna discuss, uh, coming up in just a couple of Saturdays, so. Um, and then the one, the one school asset that, that was quoted was, that's about almost three to four times the size of Maynard's high school class. So would it be possible for the bleacher committee also to provide comps to, um, existing? Bleachers for high schools that are of, uh, comparable size to Maynard High School? And then I would also like to know if those schools have press boxes, uh, for their configurations as well. Is that all possible?
Uh, Asabet has a press box, uh, I think we actually showed you the picture of it, but.
Right, but Asabet, as I just said, is almost four times the size of the enrollment of Maynard. So that's what I would like to see, the schools that are comparable in size to Maynard High School has a press box.
I would just wanna add to that, uh, I think it's a good question to explore. I don't know if those schools will also have a chapter seventy-four. I don't know if those schools will also have a chapter seventy-four program for W A V M. So that does make Maynard a little bit different when we look at comparable sizes, because we do have a program related to audio visual, um. But I think it would something certainly we can, I think, look into. And I know, Chris, going back to what we had talked about at our last meeting, I think you were gonna look to the, uh, the vendor to see what are those size, the savings or what that would look like for a smaller set of seven hundred and fifty bleachers, um, pre-fab or whatever that might be. Is that, is that part of the, the still
It wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be as much the vendor, because we'd be looking at resizing the foundations and, and slabs as well. But, um, yeah, we could do that. Um, I would like to try and target some sizes just so we know it, but I can, you know, what those targets are going to be, but I could work on, with the committee on that. We often, if not always, when we work on a, on a bleacher project, we'll have what I consider to be a base bid with alternates to expand the capacity of the, the bleacher. So being able to offer that to, to Maynard is something I think is a reasonable request. We could, you know, we could permit it at the size that we're at now, and we can always, um, do less. But when we go out to bid, we could structure it so that you can get numbers on two or three sizes, um, of alternate bleachers.
And Chris, just to, yeah, no, just to, thank you, um, just to kind of make sure we're all on the, the same page in thinking. So what, right now, you've gotten, or you're, you're in the process of getting all the plan approvals for a certain size, but it would be in the largest end. The, there is always, once you go out for bid, to reduce to the footprint, to bleacher. Um, and I think there was the intent that was always expected to be the case. We just, if you expand later, that's where you run into more challenges, because the plans, um, there's some issues with the planning board. I just, I know I'm certainly paraphrasing, but I want to make sure that what we see now in the design piece, there is going to be add alternates. There is going to be potentially reduced. It doesn't mean we're going to be spending three million necessarily, three point one, um, because there's going to be different presentations. Is, can I, can I get that validation from, from you as far as, um, when you do the final designs, that we'll have those add alternate options?
Um, it's certainly a conversation I'm happy to have with the, with the committee. It has not been part of our charge to date, uh, but certainly if, if that's what you're looking for, we can, we can certainly do that, yeah.
Thank you.
Question for Go ahead, Justine.
Sorry, I, I just had one final question, um, and actually goes back to the electric, uh, and I, because I do recognize that, you know, it's a cost that, you know, I think electric is, is estimated to rise, you know, we're, we're factoring in about thirty-five percent next year, uh, the cost of electricity. And so I know that, Chris, you mentioned that you don't see that it will be a big change. We shouldn't see a, a big change, um, but then later you mentioned that the building will be heated, and it'll be heated all electric. So do we current, and this might be a question actually even for Brian or Natasha, do we currently heat the other buildings? And if so, um, is there a delta that we should be expecting there? Of having to absorb?
Um, just for clarity, what other buildings?
The field house, are you thinking, and the current concession?
Right, exactly, yep.
I can't speak to the field house. I don't know, Brian, if
I don't know.
Um, the concession, I, I, I've seen them wear coats and gloves, um, on the coldest days with the window open, but sometimes. So I would say if there is heat, it's very minimal, um, but the window is, is open. Uh, I don't, we don't have restroom, so I don't know, you know, that would be, obviously the porta potties aren't heated. So that would be add new, um.
Okay, so that, that could be a significant cost, especially if you're heating a building that you've got the concession stand windows open, um, and the heat's going out as well. Uh, but it's, it's something to factor in, though, is just, is all I'm saying, is, is that is a cost that we weren't really expecting also.
Chris, can I, um, ask you, and I, I think this may be what earlier, Justine, because I, I maybe had the same thought, and Krista Silva mentioned, um, you had talked about some savings in regards to LED fixture conversion. Um, can you speak to that point a little bit more? Because it did sound like that there would be opportunities for cost savings for that. Was that about if we were to replace all of them, and that would be the savings?
Right.
Or, okay.
Presently, you have, I'm just going to zoom in on, on that a little bit now. So presently, you've got these light poles along the visitor's side. Here on the north side, you've got four, and I believe you've got four, uh, down this side as well. So those are all what's considered to be metal halide, excuse me, um, metal halide, um, light fixtures. Uh, the new LED fixtures, you would only need four poles, not eight, and the, uh, so you'd probably get better than forty percent reduction. Typically, just the fixture between metal halide and LED is about a forty percent reduction. So you'd probably be in, in, in better than a fifty percent reduction on your electrical load for the, for the operation of the lights. You obviously have to spend for the construction and installation of the lights, but operationally, as you, as you, um, as you saw your electric bill come in, it would actually be less.
Um, and then the other thing, I know we've mentioned, and I've heard a lot, and I heard you mention it a little bit here, but because the public has a lot of sensitivity to other areas about this project, I just wanted to get clarity, um, for, for our boards, and that makes sure we're all on the same page. So at this point, um, there has not been, because it wasn't part of the RFP, and Matt can maybe elaborate as well, to look at a replacement of the track and a replacement of the field, because that was outside the scope of what the design would be, and outside the scope of the project RFP. And I, I think also I would look to the select board, because that was outside of our conversations that we had a year, whatever that was ago, right? It was to keep it focused on bleacher as need. I just want to make sure that our boards are aligned. I'll make sure I'm not mischaracterizing that, Matt. If I see your head shaking, I just want to
Yeah, I'm, I'm, by shaking my head, I'm, I'm agreeing with you that that was not part of the design.
Okay, um, and I, and I know Justin, he's not able to win, but last time, and he made a very good point, is that, um, any changes would require an amendment, a different RFP, and those are all costs that would be additional on top of what is already expensed, um, to even consider a design for a track or a field replacement. So those would all be, those are outside of the scope of what we have now, and would require an amendment to an RFP. Is that correct?
Yes.
As well, okay, thank you. Um, but however, in our meetings, we did talk about the possibility in the future, if the town wanted to explore a track replacement or anything with the, the field, that these changes with the bleachers would actually allow for the expansion of the field more. So it would not inhibit it in any way. It actually would allow for closer to what I think the regulations were. And I know that was some, some members commented on that. Um, so I just wanted to kind of make sure that was out there, because there's a lot of public interest in all of this. But, um, I'd rather hear it from the, the mouth of the folks who have gone through this analysis to maybe share, Chris. Can you expand on that part a little bit more?
Sure, I don't have the image handy, but, um, the committee has some very good questions as we get started. And one of the questions was, does the work with the replacement of the bleacher and the location of the, the field house prohibit us from ever renovating the track or changing the dimension internally of the field? And, and it does not. So you've heard me talk a lot about bleachers and field houses today. Primarily what we design are track and field and athletic facilities. So, um, we took a quick look at your track facility, and thankfully, we had the full site surveys. We were able to say with confidence that we can reconfigure your track to have a four hundred meter track. You could widen your soccer field to be at least a seventy yard, um, dimension, which it's not now. It's, it's under, um, well, it's probably a sixty-five yard dimension now, so you could get wider with soccer and still accommodate all the, all the, so from a footprint standpoint and from a grading standpoint, we can, we can make a new track fit, um, and you don't prohibit any of that work with what we're doing with the bleacher now. Does that answer your question, Natasha?
Yeah, thank you for, for clarifying that. That was something, even though it's the cost associated with these things are not part of this conversation, the future opportunity to explore them have been considered when we are building, that it wouldn't limit those, um, those future actions if desired by the town. Okay, great. Thank you.
I know the capital planning committee has been reviewing, is it intended to have this put on the capital improvement plan as part of the annual budget cycle this, this year?
It is a project on there. Um, I rem, I don't know, um, I know I saw it in ClearGov, that's all I can say. At one of our, when they did their demo, they had it penciled in. I think the dollar amount was different. I think it was based on that two point five Jeff from that rough, you know, envelope number that I think we were all kind of working off of before we got some numbers recently from, from Huntress. But, um, that is something that I think it was in for F Y twenty-five. I don't think they had a funding source, uh, clearly for that yet. I don't think any of us really have that. Um, but I remember John Larkin, um, showing that is one of the school, like a, a project built into the ClearGov, their process. Oh, Lindsay's, I don't know if Lindsay, yep, Lindsay, I don't know if
Hi, Lindsay McConkey. I don't, is it appropriate for me to comment right now as a member of the capital planning committee?
Yes, I don't, I don't want to speak too. I just don't know, though, like, how, how that was working, but I just remember John showing us in ClearGov where it's kind of penciled in, but yeah, please share.
So it is, um, it is in ClearGov right now. My last conversation with Wayne and Mike about capital projects, when we discussed this, because this was in front of CPC as a potential funding source, it's not really in the capital planning queue, because it has no funding source. And also, there is no clarity on what the amount requested would be, or at least there wasn't as of the last meeting that we had. So I think that would be a conversation that we would have after this meeting and after, um, the CPC determines, you know, uh, makes their decision about your request to have it funded there.
And as this, what, what's the timeline for the CPC on that? I think, did we cover that in the timeline?
The CPC, um, is voting on, so there's two upcoming meetings, uh, February seventh, I think, is where they will be, um, discussing the project a little bit more. Um, and the following meeting, the twenty-first, is my understanding base, is when they are going to be voting on all their projects for funding.
Um, given all of the rather significant questions covered here tonight, and, and amount of review that still needs to happen through the CPC, through the planning board, through the conservation commission, and, and through the capital planning committee, um, has the bleacher committee considered extending the timeline for a later town meeting approval? Whether that be in the fall or, or after that?
Can we even, uh, name here?
I'm sorry?
I'm not sure who's here from the bleacher committee.
Well, I know, um, Matt, Matthew, he's, he has the timeline for the, the project. Um, certainly, we've been basing it on, I think, because after our, our last meeting or the last town meeting, or right before leading up to the fall town meeting, we had discussed punting it from the fall, because it was too early there, waiting for more information and reintroducing it in the spring. So we've been kind of continuing on that plan. If there is a desire to now change that timeline, I don't, that hasn't been, um, discussed in the, in the task force necessarily, so.
I think there's, there's a lot of unknowns right now, and, but one thing we do know is that even the, the cost estimates won't come in until just a month before town meeting or so, when even the draft warrant article, uh, should have already been drafted. And so I've, I've got a few, few questions maybe to take back, uh, for our meeting on, you know, uh, you know, debt exclusion and how that process would, would play out in, in context of this as well. Um, and just making sure that we have the, the timelines correct to get it right, and to make sure that we're addressing all the conversations that we've had here tonight and are going to be had in all those other boards, right? So I think there's a lot of unknowns. What's going to come out of the planning board? What's going to come out of Conscom? Um, what will the CPC decision be? So I just want to make sure we're all giving ourselves the space to make the correct decision for the town, rather than rushing on an artificial timeline.
So one thing that I just will add is that what we know for sure, and there is a lot of compressed decision-making, certainly at the end of that February, you know, March. Um, what we know for sure, sure that, um, the CPC's decision will certainly, because they, if, let's just say, the CPC decides they're going to bond. They won't have the capacity to bond for all of it anyway, because there are certain aspects that are not CPC eligible. Um, and even if they maybe wanted to say, yes, we will bond, I don't think that they would be able to absorb the whole cost anyway. So there still would need to be a debt exclusion, um, for the town and, and for whatever is not able to be funded by the CPC. So those particular actions of voting would still be necessary. I think the question is, what is the dollar amount? Right, that would be put there? And I think that's the part we don't, we don't know yet, for sure.
I think, I think Jeff's question is not about dollars and cents, and it, it speaks to David's comments as well. I think that the question is the timing of it. Without the amount of information that we're requested tonight, and, and some of the things and changes we're looking to see in similar comparisons we've requested, Jeff's question was, would the, um, committee consider pushing the date back? It's not about the, the amounts, it's about the lack of information that we have on hand and expect to have on hand when we are going to be expected to make a decision sometime at the end of February. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yes, that's correct, although I, the, the one at the end, I'm curious on when our decision point would be, because I would assume it would come with the approval, the final warrant.
I don't know when our decision point is going to be. I just know that, uh, according to the, the, uh, screenshots we looked at tonight, the, there's going to be a request made of us to make a decision, I believe it was February twenty-seventh.
Let me, let me clarify that, um, what, what was reflected was the town administrator's deadline to receive all the draft articles in order to prepare a draft warrant, which is what Jeff was, was getting to.
Right.
Submit a draft articles and warrant to the select board for acceptance. That's, that's what the end of February is.
Well, well, so that actually, um, shrinks our timeline, because we will have to have had, made a decision prior to that. And I think, I think our meeting is going to be the sixth, so the next one would be the, um, twentieth. So we would have to be making a decision by February twentieth.
No, it's a, it's, I think it's the other way around. I think, I think the articles would be due to my office to be prepared to present draft articles with the consideration of the select board, whether to include in the final warrant or not. So, um, you know, like, I think around March meeting, select board meetings is when, is when the select board, you know, accepts articles. And this, and this, in whatever the funding scheme may be, debt exclusion or otherwise, presumably that is the article that we're referring to.
Did, uh, if, if, Chris, uh, Chris, are you, are you going on that, on that direction?
Oh, no, because, Chris, regardless of the, the date and the timing, Chris, yeah, you, you conveyed my, my question.
Okay. Yeah, I'm all set, I'm all set, David.
Okay, and this, this may be an unfair question, but, um, did anyone attend the last, I believe this, this issue came up at CPC, the last, their last meeting, did it not? Um, was there a sense in the room as to where things were heading from their perspective? Um, relative to, do they have the money? Do they have the stomach? Do they have the intent to move it forward? Or was it pretty obvious from their discussion that no? And is the CPC discussion irrelevant as a result of that, based on what we can presume from that discussion might happen? I was not there, so I'm wondering if there was any sense, general sense? Did they take a straw poll? Did they say any, you know, where are we? What was, you know, was there any type of that type of discussion?
Um, I, I will say that I was there, Mary attended as well. Um, at the next CPC, um, Brian will, will be there as well. Um, they presented us questions, we've responded to them, a lot of just detailed. Um, that was the first day that they had the cost that came through, so we were all kind of still processing that, um, that number that came, that came across everyone's, um, email. Um, that number that came, that came across everyone's, um, email on the seventeenth. Um, there was discussion about it. I know there was a FinCom member who, who joined and, um, asked questions about. Bonding and so there seemed to be questions or discussions on the capacity and what that might. Look like, there was no vote. Um, on there and I don't want to, I can't speak to the CPC. There's several members there and everyone has a certain, a different opinion, so. I do respect their autonomy. Um, I just know that there was a lot of different discussions. Um, I will, it didn't sound like they, they would not approve. The project at all. Um, I think it's just a matter of what they feel is able to be funded. Um, and you know, discussing internally amongst their board if there's. Desire or ability to, uh, bond it at, at what amount. So that's what we should maybe hear more about. At the next meeting and then the, the decision. On the twenty, um. Uh, twenty first. Um, I do, I know, I see Denise Walsh and I hate to put Denise on the spot, but she has been the CPC liaison. Um, and I said, oh, John, thank you. Um, I don't know if John, you know, there's some CPC members here. So if you maybe. John, I, I, I'd want to see if you have some comments you can share on the questions.
I think as we mentioned in previous meetings, the CPC has very limited funds for this kind of project. Um, the last bit of information I got from town accountant. Was for recreation. Uh, projects in general. We have like, uh, three hundred and sixty-five thousand available. If we funded. All the projects that have made applications this time. It would amount to three hundred and thirteen thousand. That's not including anything for the bleachers.
I have another question if I may.
Excuse me?
Go ahead, Mike.
Yep, um, it's, it's going back a little bit, but, um, in the spirit of a town that. Um, would love to have everything, but of course can't afford everything. Um, could, and I know we addressed this a little bit at the last, uh, select board meeting. But what would be the consequences, uh, to the program if there was no press box included in this project? Or another alternative, maybe including the capacity for one to be added at a later date? Just wondering who can speak to that.
I'm going to speak, let Brian speak to that because he's closer to the programmatic. Piece, um, I will just say in the, the generally. Um, there is a consent, well, there had been a consensus that. Not having a press box was not a point of consideration because that would be. Limiting what we currently have versus making improvements. Um, and because it, we have the impact to WAVM, but I, I will. Brian, I don't know if you want to elaborate anymore.
Yeah, I can just briefly comment. I mean, there's two implications. One is it's a drastic step backwards for our high school WAVM programming. Which looking at the screen, lots of you have had kids who participated in that program. So to not have a press box means they don't get to record the games in the same way. They don't have the control box. They don't have that experience of a WAVM program. The other thing that I would have to check with MIAA is that I believe that that's a requirement to host certain. Um, games, whether they're football games or tournament games. So we would not be able to host those if that was the requirement. But I'd have to check that.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Um, on that same question, um, Chris Huntress. Are there any? Projects that you've? Removed that just from your experience that you've taken press boxes away or that, um, have downsized? Or is there alternatives to press boxes in the capacity that? We're, we're seeing on a, on the stand itself that, I don't know, just for context and, um, understanding.
Yeah, um. Most times if we remove a press box, we replace it either in kind or, or with something a little bit larger. Having said that. We have in the past, they moved a press box as part of a larger project. Say we're removing the bleacher and the press box, like, you know, like we're proposing with you. And we only build the granite stand back and we do the press box as an alternate and we put the foundation in. When you put the bleacher in, but then can be able to come back and add a press box later. It's always more expensive to do it that way, um, to divide a project, you know, from one into. Into two. Your other alternatives from a press box perspective, and we haven't talked about this with the committee. But, um. You could consider a press box on the visitor's side potentially that was not elevated. Meaning not that it wouldn't be elevated at all, but, but it would be elevated, say, three or four feet. Off the ground. That's, um, not desirable from a press box standpoint. But if somebody said, you know, what would you have to do to meet the requirements of MIAA, that's probably. Compliant, but it's not desirable. Filming would be. Very, very limited from a press box of, of that stature. So it's not something we'd recommend, but could we do it? You know, we could consider it.
How many, Chris, how many, um? How many high school football facilities, athletic facilities are you aware of that you've? Been part of that do not have a press box?
None.
Thank you.
Okay. Because I've been to a lot of high school football games and lacrosse games and soccer games, and I've never seen a high school facility without a press box.
The only time we've ever done, we, we, we did it once and it was a temporary condition and it was based on funding availability where they delayed for two years. The installation of a press box, but it was always intended to be part of the project, but, um, and they eventually had it built, um. And that was CCONC, but, um, but yeah, uh, no, I've never seen one without a press box.
Chris, um, Contras, can, can you address quickly the, um, the issue of the elevator, essentially the lift? Um, that would exist for handicapped accessibility to, uh, an upper deck. Uh, press box. Is that external to the, to the, uh, bleacher structure itself in the rear? Um, and if that's the case, what's the accessibility to the lift?
So the, it's an excellent question. Um, so there's a walk, a proposed walkway that would go around the back. It's called your accessible route. It has to be at least four feet wide. It can, it can narrow it to three feet to get around obstruction, but in your case. It's entirely four feet wide at a minimum and probably six feet wide, you know, most of the way in. Um, so there would be an asphalt walkway that would come around the back, um, and provide access to that. Accessible lift. The lift, there's a difference between an elevator and a lift and the difference is, is about a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so you really want to do a lift. And not a, not an elevator. A lift is limited to fourteen feet in maximum travel height. And the elevation of your first floor of your press box would be at twelve feet. So you would qualify. As a lift and it would be a separate structure. It does. It does attach itself to the bleacher, um, just for structural integrity, but, um. But it comes in as an independent piece and has its own foundation and then provides access, um. Up that twelve feet, uh, to, to provide access to the, to the press box.
And also requires regular maintenance?
I think everything requires regular maintenance, doesn't it?
I would think so, but mechanical maintenance.
Um, yeah, I'm not sure if it has the same annual inspection requirements that an elevator would, but, um, I wouldn't be surprised if it did.
Anything else?
I had one question, actually. This is more for Matt. Uh, I'm actually, uh, maybe Greg and, and Brian, sorry. Um, at our last. Um, meeting, we had talked about getting some information publicly accessible for this project. Um, the thought was creating it as a project or on ClearGov and then we could link it to the school and have a placeholder. I just wanted to make sure that. We're still on track with doing that because to a lot of people's question is there's a lot of information here, there's education and I want to make sure that. Folks can have access to what is being provided, um, as soon as possible. So. If that isn't in place already, can we prioritize that, um, in getting that going?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And, and Matt, I know that you have provided, um. Like minutes or just kind of summaries from the discussions and I would just think all of those would be really. That would be a great place in addition to the presentations to be, um. Find a home for folks to reference. Um, Mary, um, I know you, you guys have been pretty quiet. We saw a lot of us, but I just want to. Uh, go through the school committee. Is anyone have any, give any questions or anything to add?
Yeah, I just, um, I had, um, one clarifying point. I don't know if it makes a difference or not, but I just went back to all of our previous notes and when we had the. The visitor side as well as the home side, the visitor's side had three hundred and four seats and the home side had three hundred and fifty. So we're. We are reducing the size by twenty-five percent, um, if you think of it that way. Don't know if it makes any difference or not, but we have done that. And I also just wanted to make a comment that I think is accurate, but, um, Wayne can probably talk better to it, that, um. I think if we have a, a nice facility with the nice bleachers and that. We might have the opportunity of actually getting some more rental revenue coming in, which we've. You know, we did have a good amount before COVID and we've lost a lot of it and that would hopefully offset some of these, um, costs that we're talking about. So those were my, my two comments.
Thank you. And I just will add to that separately, and I know Justine has been part of, um. The, the rec commission is, has a task force that is looking at. Field, so this is kind of a parallel, um, effort of, of one, um, use of our facilities. Um, creating that historical and then however that leads to, um, revenues or expenses and just an overall. Town, a better way to kind of monitor and understand. Um, so I, I would, as one person, and I think many might feel what, the, yes, any, any enhancement. Um, my hope would be that would allow an opportunity for revenue. I know that. I was thinking about events and we haven't mentioned it, but I, I just do want to recognize that the town, um, like the Relay for Life, they do. Um, they've gone to the field every, every year. Um, I don't know if they're. Been taking, but I know that's just another public event that's, you know, held, um. On alumni, um, so we think about like use of facilities, when we think about the. Um, electric defibrillator, access to that, like that's all kind of, which is will be on the building that would, um. That might be another opportunity to support, but we don't always have, I think, a comprehensive. Use of our fields and we're working towards that. Mauro, I don't, did you have any other questions or?
I don't have any, I don't have any questions, um, for, for anybody about the bleachers. I, I do think that. You know, one of the things that maybe we need to do, um, better is, is, is to get the, the information about this out. And, and maybe not call it just bleachers, but that we're, you know, we're, we're talking about bleachers and the facilities because. You know. If you're talking, you know, there's lots of talk out there about how much this is going to cost and if we're talking about that. Just in relation to bleachers. That's exorbitant and, and outrageous. Um, so I think we need to, to kind of change the way that we're, um, kind of marketing this. Um, in a way that, um, kind of incorporates the whole project and not just the bleachers. But thank you for all the information and I thought that, you know, there were some really great questions, um, that I think. You know, lots of different, it, it's great to have all the, uh, everybody together to talk about all this stuff because, you know. There were some questions that were asked that, you know, because of my background, I'm not going to think of. So I do appreciate the, you know, the questions from the select board. Thank you.
Elizabeth, anything, um?
For you? Same, same as Mauro. I was thinking the same thing. I'm really glad we, um, had a variety of questions this time. I think it's very useful to the project. Um, and I think, um, along with Mauro's point about it being marketed as the package, package that it is, probably. Making sure that people know why is important, that just not, we just don't, you know, want to have bathrooms that, that we have to have them for code would be probably infor- information that the community needs. So thank you for, for everybody for the meeting tonight.
Thank you. And, and David, actually now that, that just kind of came up, that you asked about. Um. Question from CPC. One of the questions that did come up, and I think this is maybe also helpful for the general public. Um, was how could this project be broken down into multiple projects protect, potentially? And the challenge is that it can't for the most part because. Um, if you build the bleacher, you need to have a bathroom and then you need to have it bring it up to ADA compliant. So that's where some of those things are by nature. The only, I would say. Additional piece would be the, the area regarding the concession, but you're already building a building. Um, there, so that would be, I guess, the, the aspect. And we did talk about when we look at, um, breaking down the funding. Um. To look at and see if there's an opportunity to delineate for square footage, right? How much square footage is really dedicated for bathroom space versus the concession to get a little bit more. Context on that building, um, because the majority is for. Bathroom. And then there's the utilities that will be housed in there and that, in that storage area as well.
I, I do think that, um, it would be. I, and I just think it's probably an exercise of schools. You, you, you're probably going through this now anyways. Um, but it would be something, you know, especially having a town budget that's as tight as it is. Any large changes in operation, um, is a huge consideration. Um, and I'm not saying that we're not going to, that, that the town itself is, is going, is not going to decide to go forward with this project. But I do think we really need to know what that means and what that's going to cost. And not just the three point one or three point two million dollars for the facility. But also operationally, what's it going to, what's the increase in electricity? What's the increase in, um, staffing? What's the increase in water, sewer? All of that. And I don't, I, I don't think we have a handle on that yet. Um, and I realize that, that we're still in the early processes, but those are, those are. Really big questions because that's going to come back to us.
The CPC has asked, and this is where the school is, is looking like. For maintenance plan, right? I think that's part of any approval for the CPC that they would be looking. For that. So that is where those, it's really not necessarily a Huntress conversation for the design piece. But separately, operational, um, you know, how does that look? And. You know, Brian has indicated that, yes, the school, the cost associated that, I don't know. You know, right now we don't have. A public building that's necessarily that we can do a comparison to, which it makes it a little bit more challenging because then you do, do have to think about. Open, close, you know, access, a lot of those things that are still yet unknown. Um. So I think it kind of would be more of a, a commitment to maintaining it, but some of the, the costs I think are going to be dependent on. The use, um. Of, of the rental of the space and, and whatnot. So it might just, it would probably be a fluctuating number. Um, as that space is used more. But I think to the FTE piece, that's something Brian will, you know, can work with Brian on to get a better. Handle on how he envisions, um, that in working with, um. The, um, athletic department as well.
But design use and, and maintenance all need to be planned in, in conjunction with each other. So I, I'm a little nervous just excluding Huntress for that. I think. You, the bleacher committee needs to say this is the intended operational uses of that so they can incorporate that into the design.
I don't think that my maintaining, so the aspect of like who, how often the bathrooms are going to get cleaned? No, I don't think that actually falls onto. Huntress, you know, to do that part. I think they're, um, building it as for use and occupancy, but I don't think, I think the questions were about. Um, FTE to clean from what Justin, I'm just capturing Justine's question. Um, we did ask and, and, um, this is where Justin was very helpful when we talked about. Um, like the sewer, that, that's a new, like, as it relates to facilities and, and, and that, and there was, um. A lot of conversation. a lot of conversation to make sure that the slope was within a certain amount wherever the building would be placed, so that it would support more self cleaning and wouldn't require some other type of pumping. I know I'm gonna, I'm probably not speaking to that accurately, Chris, and I don't know if you want to elaborate on on that aspect, which was
Like a gravity flow of the
Right. There was certain code, yeah, yeah. So that was talked about is, you know, how do we make sure that it doesn't, you know, cleaning it, right? Though that maintenance, like, we don't want to be adding. And I'll tell you, even though this this came up in the slide, my personal, when we're looking at the bleachers and they have the different options, I mean, the the bleacher task force, the the seats, I mean, we're looking at the the flat seats, you know, that's what we are are looking at. No, I I think I see more components. I always think breakage, replacement. And so that's how I, you know, myself see that. I don't know if, you know, for context for everyone else, as we're looking about different options. That was my first initial thought is, you know, what do we need? Not what is optional and, you know, so it's the need based only.
And my final comment will be, you know, wherever this ends out, my desire for any project, whatever it may be, whether it be bleachers or whatever, is maximum usage for the majority of our residents. And so therefore, that's why I was getting at the fact, is this going to be open twenty four seven? Because when Little League is there, they're going to expect it to be open, and I would want it to be open when, you know, whatever organization is there. The reason that it's being put in theoretically is so that we can gain more access and have more accessibility and more, you know, a friendlier atmosphere for not only our residents, but for our visitors who come in to the community. So more is better. And I believe that if we don't think it through at the outset, it turns into, as I said several times at the outset, six times a year, and that's not what this facility in my eyes should be. It should be a public facility. But are we ready for it? And make sure we are. Because when people are using the field, they should have access to that. And I know Chris disagreed with me, and it's in a certain Krista Silva, that is, to a certain degree. But whether it's every day or whatever, but when people are using that field, there's a facility there that's for the purpose of not just a football game.
We did talk about actually about, you know, like, birth, like, you know, what area could that, because it has a bathroom, right? And so could there be a rental opportunity? You know, for the off chance. And I and I think all of that is, I mean, it is, it would be a community space. That would be the intent. It's just a matter of you know, making sure that we we have some protocols in place and and maintaining it.
Forgive me if this question has already been asked. But is there a sort of standard FTE, as it were, equivalent of how much labor is required to maintain the bathroom under these conditions? And because that would be helpful. I mean, I presume there's a standard amount that if we've got X number of bathrooms, then it would take this much time each day of use to to provide maintenance and and care for it, the cleaning.
I can't answer that question. That's a little bit more granular than I would know, and I don't know if Brian has that type of information of how long it would take to clean the restrooms that we don't have yet. But I would imagine first, once we get the size of what we're getting, then it would be a little bit more possible. And again, I think we'll have to, I don't know, Brian, what do you?
Yeah, once we actually figure out how big and how many and whatnot, we can get to that level of detail about the FTEs necessary to clean the bathrooms.
Now, I will say that we all recognize more expense in some capacity, right? Whether that's man hours to whatever. So when there are conversations that are going to happen down the pike about, hey, the town does not have, the school does have all the money to, you know, maintain every facility, everything, those, and we talk about facilities and getting everyone on board with booking, there might be the potential of a look at a fee scale, again, and revisiting that for for all of our public spaces. I know that the Rec, again, I look to the Rec Commission because this is something that they've been really working on, but, you know, there is a certain level of effort it does to to maintain all of our spaces. And so we do need to commit to that. And once we as a town, we'll have to be responsible for that as well. I don't know if, I don't think I have any more school committee. Krista Silva, I don't know if you have anything else.
About eight thirty? Everybody all set from the select board side?
I'm good.
Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll move to adjourn.
Anybody like to second it?
Second it.
All those in favor, David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So we're adjourned. We'll wait till you guys adjourn if you'd like, Natasha.
Yeah, thank you. Just Chris and Matt, thank you very much for your time and your presentation and answering all of our questions. I'm sure we'll have more discussion along the way. So the school committee, I'll motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, Mary Branley?
Yes.
Mauro Hogan?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera? Yes. We are adjourned at eight twenty nine, just right under.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.